Rachel, am I supposed to have this on? But it's, do I need to get into it?
All right, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. Thank you everyone for joining us today. First on our agenda that's marked for discussion is a presentation regarding the solid waste utility and fiscal year 2023 rates.
Thank you, Your Honor. Michael Maloney with DA Davidson is with us virtually to present on this item.
Michael, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Good to visit with everyone here again today. Somewhat similar to what we did a month or so ago on the sanitary sewer side. We're going to be talking a little bit today on some rate setting and planning regarding the city's solid waste fund. Leanne just introduced me, but also Ryan Miller here can can jump in as well. Like we did last time, happy to have a little bit of a dialogue as we go along. So feel free to interject or ask questions at the end before discussing next steps. Overall, I think the key here is really those same three items we think about on the utility side. So we're trying to ground some of the decision-making process here by evaluating the financial metrics, both existing and projected for the solid waste utility fund. That's going to drive the rate-setting policies, and then we'll talk a little bit about the long-term planning here. I think we're all aware, similar to our discussion on sanitary sewer, that there are several larger capital project initiatives for the solid waste fund. And we'll be needing to come back and reevaluate these projections as those costs are finalized. Obviously, there's a solid waste study as well that the council's aware of. And I think another driving factor that I think we need to point out here is there are some challenges with our projections in the near term because of some of the post-Durachio waste disposal. So that added a little bit of noise over the last couple of years in terms of some of those tonnage collections and the data we received from the Cedar Rapids Lynn County Solid Waste Agency. The focus here today is really to keep pace with some of the operational costs and should be consistent with the city's overall budgeting plan and city staff projections. The goal would be to implement late this summer, early fall for some fiscal '23 rate adjustments and the timeline thereof for the solid waste fund. Pause right there with any questions before moving on to the next slide, just as a review.
Any questions? No questions?
Let's go to slide three here. So I think the next piece we want to revisit are those key utility finance metrics. I'm going to be sure to introduce this anytime we're talking about utility financial planning and forecasting. But we're really thinking about both the measures for short and long-term liquidity. The short-term liquidity, you know, we think about in terms of our days cash on hand rating rainy day rainy day fund type thing, cash balances percentage of operating expenses. We really want to see a minimum of 90 days operating cash, 25% of annual operating expenditures. But again, with the population growth and different dynamics, especially as it relates to capital planning, it might be useful to have a baseline dollar target, you know, around $1 million or something along those lines as we think about these. The other metric in terms of long-term liquidity is really that debt service coverage. So that's making sure that our net revenues after paying operating costs are sufficient to not only service the debt, but also provide that cushion. And that cushion does two things. One, it helps absorb any volatility year to year to make sure we can successfully pay our operating costs, pay our bills, and pay our debt service payments. And it also helps us make sure that we don't become too dependent on borrowing over the long term by providing enough surplus dollars after operating in debt to help reinvest into the system and complete pay-as-you-go capital projects and have that balance when necessary on a go-forward basis. This is really a review here, more than happy to answer any questions, but want to get in to the focus here for the solid waste discussion after this refresher.
Any questions at this time? We have one question. Go ahead.
Yeah, Michael Grant Harper here. The, that bottom-line bullet, minimum target for financial health, 25% of annual operating expenses, 90 days cash. And then you have the example of 1 million. Is that example of 1 million representative of 25%?
Just really trying to give you guys an overall thought process here. Really, right now, $1 million would be close to 33% for your utility. So rather than it being one-to-one, just kind of giving that round example. I know as you consider, you know, go forward with some of these larger capital initiatives that you'll have in the coming months and upcoming budget cycles, those are places you can come back on so that we can have those metrics in place on a go-forward basis. Fair enough?
Fair enough. Thanks.
Yep. So let's go on to slide four here. And just a little bit on the historical basis, you know, I think it's important to point out where we've been and where we're going to. I mentioned around $3 million of operating revenues, and that's really for the most recent audited fiscal year. We've got some 2022 near-finished data that we've used to do some updates as well for the projections. But just on an audited basis, here's where we've been. Obviously, the solid waste utility has not been particularly debt-reliant historically, but we had some of the modest contribution from the bank loans related to the original public services facility financing. We know there'll be some additional needs going forward. So while this focus for upcoming rate adjustments is related to keeping up with some operating costs that we'll talk about, we do know we'll want to revisit this on a go-forward basis for those projections. I really got a nice summary of this on page five. This is more of the show and the work. I think the bullet points articulate this a little bit better if we want to go to the fifth slide. So overall, we have seen those increase in revenues in preparation for these additional capital needs of the system, increasing from about 1.8 to about $3 million over that period of time. Operating expenses have been relatively steady. Again, we want to make sure we've got those liquidity metrics met. We know revenue growth is going to come from a couple places. One, population and therefore customer growth on the solid waste utility, as well as some modest rate adjustments. Really, again, when we're thinking about this long-term, we want to know what revenues we're going to need to pay operating expenses, future debt payments, maintain reserves, and cover pay-as-you-go capital. In terms of the driver of operating costs here, I think the real key is that the city is disposing waste to Cedar Rapids Lynn County Solid Waste Agency under an agreement. And I think the notice that was previously provided to the city was a 5% increase in their in their tonnage tipping fees for this fiscal year that we're now in as of July. So the goal here is really for the city to keep pace with those adjustments while we're prepared in the near to midterm to make those adjustments necessary for future debt coverage and catch balance management. So those are in progress. You're going to have some eventual costs that are going to be completed in terms of some of those capital needs, whether it's the public services facility or the fleet replacement work. There's also going to be the solid waste study completed. So all of those factors are going to get revisited and baked into here when we've got some firmer numbers, really a near-term focus at this time, but wanted to at least set the stage so the council's aware of what's coming going forward. Pause there, make sure I'm hitting the right marks before wrapping up on the next couple of slides and then the potential action over future meetings.
Any questions?
Let's go to six. So I think the key here again is really just address what's necessary for fiscal '23. Really, the options that were reviewed and we are consistent with what the city put together for the budget period here. Just trying to make sure that we're going to hit the mark on the targeted $3.1 million of revenue that we're in the fiscal '23 budget process. I've mentioned that the few items that are sort of our moving pieces here already. Again, firming up some of those costs for where we land on public services facility, the fleet replacement work that's been underway in terms of getting some feedback on costs. And then again, better understanding where we are in terms of tonnage levels post-Durachio. I think that noise over the last couple of years moving out here, starting over the coming months and the last several months, is going to be helpful. The second target is this is moving in the correct direction to help us get to those appropriate long-term rate settings, similar with where we need to be on sanitary sewer. So that solid waste study is going to be part of that, and then we're going to build from that data as well to make sure on a go-forward basis we're in line. Again, I'm just trying to be very clear for the council and the public that the rate adoptions here in the near term are being taken with an understanding that future adjustments are likely going to be necessary as well for the sufficiency of the system. Any any questions on that before we get into what those details are and then the finalizing on the timing?
Okay, Grant has a question.
Yeah, maybe this this is maybe for for Ryan. What do you expect in terms of any lingering or residual post-Durachio disposal that we have in the city?
So just to clarify, I would say it started with COVID and the Durachio. We saw a huge increase in curbside disposal, so roughly about 30% increase on curbside collections. And so a lot of that was paid through by extra bag tags. And so we're hoping that it will level out here, and we'll see a slight reduction. So in the last two years, we've realized that increase.
Okay, so it's an anticipated decreasing impact for anything that's still waiting attention.
Yeah, our disposal fees have been higher than anticipated, mainly due to there's more people at home. And then with the Durachio coupled with that, people are just still cleaning up. A lot of, we're still processing a lot of yard waste, so there's some costs there. Yeah.
So on to slide seven here, I think this detail is just helping to talk about what we're looking at. You know, we've had some movement over the last year from 1715 to 1875 on the residential side. We're looking to go up about another dollar and a quarter, and I think this is consistent with what staff presented over the budget process in terms of matching up with where we need to be on the revenue side. So the goal here is really trying to generate an additional $200,000 in additional revenue for a full fiscal year. Again, getting this implemented later in the summer, early fall, we might be just shy of that. But I think that's useful information for where we're going to be, knowing that we'll further evaluate this as some of that additional detail we mentioned comes through. I don't know if there's a whole lot more to add here from my standpoint. Ryan, is there anything you'd want to kind of describe here for the council? Or is this maybe pretty clear or apparent from what's been done before, where we're going in terms of matching up with the budget revenue needs that we've identified?
No, it's pretty consistent with what we discussed as a staff and the Public Services Board. The only thing we're going to look at is our fees for commercial disposal. That's our uptown collections. The board wants to take a look at that and try to compare them to other cities at this point and see if we can see if there's any increases necessary.
And Ryan, that's a great segue to the eighth slide. I know you were kind enough to prepare some of the comparable data. I know the city's looked at previously, but on slide eight is where the city stacks up. I know one of the key differences is the manual versus automated or manual and automated versus some of these communities, many which are a little bit larger, but I think it's important to just identify this. And we selected just a few, you know, key details in terms of what's included in those costs, curbside recycling, curbside yard waste. I know the city's tracked some additional items for comparison's sake and trying to stay competitive. Ryan, rather than me rambling on any further, if there are some highlights here, I think this is important data to include for the council, but you might have some more nuance as an expert in this to share for the council at this time of day.
So typically, when we bring a rate increase forward, I can show you a very simple bar graph and compare our fees with other cities. Anymore, it's getting more complicated to do that because each city's starting to have different programs in place. So giving example, Iowa City Cedar Falls, they have gone automated. And so that automated collection system looks different in every community. For example, Cedar Falls, they do not collect curbside recycling. Everything goes to the recycling center. Some communities do not have a yard waste drop-off center nor recycling drop-off center. So the services from that fee schedule are starting to differ, certainly much different between each community. And so when we start doing those comparables every year, it's going to get a little more complex. We'll make sure to list everything out. So the best we could do is provide our current or projected rate data. You can compare that to similar cities of our size and list out what services they get from those rates.
And I just echo, you know, guy from 100 miles away kind of thing. I've worked with two larger regional systems. And there's definitely, you know, it's dynamic right now in terms of what are being offered, what different systems are doing or not doing. So I think Ryan hit it right on the head. You do the best with the data you've got. I think this is relatively clear in terms of for today's information, but this is going to continue to change over time in terms of what is being offered and what people are paying for these types of services. But I think the key is that Marion stacks up competitively currently with these peer communities. Ryan, or Leanne, anything else to add here before maybe getting into the timing and next steps before wrapping up this portion of the session today? So let's take a look a little bit about timing. Again, really today's action is to review this proposal and start talking about where those next steps would be. You know, really, this is going to be part of an ordinance process that would take three readings and then final reading and adoption. So just taking track of the upcoming council meetings, you use the two August meetings for the first and second reading on the updated rate ordinance. And then final reading and approval at the September 8th meeting be implemented in September on a go-forward basis for fiscal '23. I think this is relatively straightforward, but want to be clear with the council and the public in terms of what we're looking at. Someone says back on agenda for a subsequent meeting at the beginning of August. It was clear where we're going and why at this time. Happy to answer any other questions. Was trying to wrap up under 15 minutes here, and it looks like we're just on pace.
Is additional questions?
Well, Steve.
Yeah, just a comment. I would have to say, Michael, and same comment for Leanne and Ryan and everybody here that I think the manner in how the city is now planning very purposely, how these rate increases are occurring is being done very methodically, is being done with good data and good forward planning. So, you know, it's not just a guessing game anymore. I think everything is there, rolling all the factors in there. And I think giving us a very sound manner in how we are determining these rate increases. So I think that gives the city council, at least me, more comfort in how it's being done. And I would anticipate the same thing for our residents and our businesses. So I think it's being done very well.
Other questions? Comments?
Okay. Thank you very much, Ryan and Leanne. Thanks for your work and help on this. If there's anything else you guys need after the fact, just hit me up offline after this. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation regarding the Indian Creek Master Plan for Creekside Pride. Welcome.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Stacy Williams with ISG. I also have Reid from Impact 7G and Sandy from HR Green, who are partners on this project. So on behalf of the whole project team, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and the chamber to help realize the next step for the Creekside Pride initiative. So here today to kind of talk through the final concepts, we've been, we're about a year in, have received extensive public feedback and are now kind of in the final plan stages, which you should all have copies of that of that final plan in front of you. And so this is just, again, a snapshot of where we've been. So I've been working on this again for about a year. I've had a significant amount of public engagement in addition to all the work that the community has done prior to this plan. I know that there are years of kind of coming up with the initial programming. So we're really here to have put some of the details to the vision for the creek and has several overarching goals of looking at connections to recreation, connecting to existing public spaces, trails, schools, community hubs. We looked for opportunities for habitat restoration, improved water quality and flood resiliency. And then took all of those kind of overarching goals and condensed them into a plan looking at nine different sites throughout the city to accomplish those. And so I'm going to go fairly quickly through these. You've seen these concepts before. These are more fully realized versions of the concepts that you have seen. And so this is site one. This is the most upstream access point within the city of Marion. Really is meant to serve as a hub for both land and water-based recreation. The land-based trail will go through here, too. We have got Tower Terrace that is just to the south and then Winslow Road. And so again, these are all on existing city-owned tracks that are within the floodplain and not being fully realized, the potential being fully realized currently. So if you want to click on to the next slide, and so here's just a snapshot of what that would look like. Next. And so this is still in that same location, but just south of Tower Terrace and to the east of Winslow. And so this is, I call it the triangle piece. It's shaped as a triangle, and then there's Indian Creek Road that's to the southeast also. And so knowing that this is going to be a hub for both land and water recreation, have some overflow parking, restrooms, drinking fountains, interpretive plaza outside of the floodplain, which is why it's not on the other side of the street. And then also knowing there's neighborhood right there, providing some connections to the neighborhood through a plate feature also. Site two, this is right by Indian Creek Elementary and then Lynnmar High School. The new pedestrian bridge is going in across the creek currently, I believe, as well as the segment of trail. So for this opportunity, we're really just looking at providing opportunity to connect to the creek. So limestone stairs for people that want to just have a sit and hang out near the water. There's benches, limestone stairs for people that want to creek walk and explore. We also see this as a connection for those trail users where they could maybe stop and take a break, but then also as a connection point to site three, which will come next. And so here's a rendering of what that could look like. And then here's site three. This is really one of what we call kind of the showstopper sites. So this is just south of Belmont High School, 29th Avenue or 28th is just above. And so currently, just to provide some context, there are two large stormwater pipes that are emptying and running through this site now. So what we're looking at here is redirecting those flows to a large treatment wetland, restoring the site with native plantings. We have an elevated boardwalk that would all be designed to be floodable, knowing that this does, the site does flood. But then also incorporating programming, so there's a deeper pool where you could potentially have fishing. We have these little nodes for an outdoor classroom. So we really see this as a connection point to the schools where they could take advantage of the site as well for environmental programming or just an opportunity to get the students out and journaling by nature, or it could be exploring the creek. So tying in all of those features as well as connections to the existing land-based trail network and then the neighborhood that's around it. Also, just out of view here, the letter F is an Oxbow, which restoration, which is really a really important habitat and nursery for a lot of those small fish species, of which there are a couple of listed species found within Indian Creek. So again, that enhances habitat, but then also looking at when water levels are high enough, you could float through there. And when they're not, it provides just another amenity for the community and connection point. And so here's a perspective of what that elevated boardwalk section could look like. We really like this one, you can tell. And here's site four. I'll go quickly through this one, but again, looking at some restoration. This is an existing city-owned track that has a lot of invasives that are growing there. So working to incorporate some natives, have parking, potentially some natural playscape for the adjacent neighborhood. There's an existing, again, stormwater pipe that's forming kind of a basin there, but but making some improvements to that. And then also having stone access down to the creek and then also tying into where the land-based trail goes, which is over by the letter H. So this is a snapshot of some of that natural playscape features. Also looked at how to incorporate art throughout all of these sites as well. And so site five is the next formalized canoe and kayak access location. We strategically located these to provide varying levels of experience. So some closer together, some a little bit farther apart. So knowing that a lot of folks will be beginners, wanted to provide different distances between these more formalized access points and those stone stair access where people could get on and off the water, but that's not what they were, you know, designed to accommodate. These are the more formalized access. So this is the second of those. This is right across the street from Lineage Park. And so really taking advantage of this existing city only and to have not only water access, again, connection to the land-based trail, but then also incorporating some other features with some loop trails, some native restoration, maybe public art tied in here as well. Okay, on to site six. And so site six is another one of those kind of showstopper sites. And the thinking here, it says Willow Park and Donnelley Park. One of the things that we heard from the community is they really wanted opportunities for fishing. So throughout this, we not only looked at in-stream habitat, but for this location, we're looking at creation of a pond, putting a pond, a fishing pond here adjacent to the creek. One of the cool features is we were really looking at this with an eye towards accessibility. So for folks with varying ability levels and mobility levels could come and take advantage of this site. While we're also looking at amenities along the creek and some of those in-stream features along the creek as well as an accessible fishing plaza or plaza area that let her be along the creek. And here's a rendering of what that accessible fishing plaza could look like. Next slide. Next slide. And so we're going to keep on the showstopper sites because this is Thomas Park. And so really for the thinking for this site is there's already all of these great things happening at this location. It's a well-used and a well-loved city park already. So the thinking for this site is how do we elevate that? And so this is the site where we've chosen for a more high-adventure-esque type experience. So we have a series of in-stream features that they're called veins, cross veins that basically direct the flow, help stabilize the banks, but then direct the flows to the center of the stream to allow for more consistent flows, knowing that it fluctuates pretty significantly. But then it also allows us to get a little bit of that more high-energy experience with some riffles. So a series of those throughout this section of the creek, also looking at it as a circuit. So people could either float through and enjoy the creek, or they could do it as a circuit and kind of do it several times in a row. So we showed two different paths to do that, knowing that there are a lot of walkers and bikers that are already using the site. And then if you go to the next slide, it shows an outdoor kind of pavilion seating area. We know that for every one person that's in the water, there's eight or nine that are on the banks watching. So really wanted to accommodate those folks as well at Thomas Park. Site eight is, you can see Menards just out of view. So again, existing trail network and how do we tie in and connect the creek? So looking at those native plantings kind of and restoration opportunities for bank restoration, et cetera, throughout the project, but then also some of these unique experiences. And so here we're proposing again a stone access, but then also a little overlook for fishing or folks that just want to come out and view the water and relax near the water. Next slide. Next slide. Site nine is the last access point within the city of Marion. And so we, in thinking for this, we knew we needed parking and then also the access, but also wanted to tie in amenities for people that might be ending their experience. but also wanted to tie in amenities for people that might be ending their experience here. So having an open air shelter where people can have a sandwich and get out. There's restrooms proposed and drinking fountains and a playground across the street, also on city owned land. Looking at a fire pit or some sort of areas to incorporate some other amenities for people that not only are using the creek, but also for the neighborhood that is adjacent to this site. Any questions on, on the concepts or process?
Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
And on the one, took me a little bit because I'm like looking at this and I was trying to figure out like north, south, as I'm looking at each of the roads where we're going. Quick question. On, on the first site, yes, I'm not that far. Where's the, if it's sitting here, there's a road on each side and where's the creek?
The creek is to the, to the west.
Creek is to the southwest of, yeah, on the triangle thing.
So if you, so site, if, yeah, so if you go one more down, so there's Winslow Road. Tower Terrace would be south of, just out of view here. And then the creek is to the west. And then the triangle is to the, the south. The triangular piece that was part of this is just diagonal from where we're showing here. So it's on the east side of Winslow and south of Tower Terrace.
Got it. But it's all part of that same campus, like.
Exactly.
That sits up above like, above the legend or whatever.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Great. And then my only other thing is have we, maybe we're not far enough along. I think it's fantastic. That's, let me just say that first. I love it. But um. Are we hearing anything from the neighbors that are not going to have like parking? I think about the one south of Linmar, south of 29th, where that comes into that off of Indian Creek. Have we received anything with people? They're like, whoa, what are you doing in my back, going to be doing in my backyard?
We have not heard any of those comments. Mostly it's, hey, where's my house? This is really cool. Where's our house in relation to?
There's one sitting there.
And, and questions on, well, when is this going to happen? So those have been most of the questions that, that we've received. Early on, there were a lot of comments on, you know, trail connections or things that they wanted to see. But we, we, I haven't fielded any questions kind of that were, that were opposed to it based on proximity to their neighborhood.
And finally, the, and I like the, in that same area, we were just on, we were just out of the country and we were in an area that had a wetland. We had to cut through between the downtown area and where we were all staying. And it was a boardwalk piece like this, really walking over the wetland and, and sometimes a little more than others. And that's a fantastic addition to that unused space. So appreciate the visioning on that.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah. First of all, my overall comment is I think it's very exciting to talk about this kind of a project and taking advantage of something that Mother Nature has given us. And so look, my two questions are actually related to that. The first one is, when we look at Indian Creek itself, in order to get good flow from site one to site nine, is there a lot of work needed to get the proper depth and/or flowage of water all the way down through there? Or is there going to be low spots, high spots? I mean, have you figured all that out yet?
I'm going to give you a total politician's answer. So. So we are looking at that.
Okay.
To look at the entire creek would be a really significant investment. So we've kind of focused those in-stream pieces on some of the higher profile areas. So like Thomas Park, it, there's going to be times when the water's too low or times when the water's too high. And, and that's the case kind of across the board with, with our, with our rivers and streams. So that's, that was our approach. What is, what can we do but in a realistic budget and timeframe scenario, knowing that it's not going to be usable all the time? But we did try and incorporate water quality habitat, in-stream features that would help with flows, but also some bank stabilization throughout these sites. As part of this.
Yeah, I know we're not going to dredge the entire creek, so I, I've not gone down it. But obviously there's going to be some spots that are going to be different than others. Other, other part is curiosity. How many miles of creek is it from site one to site nine?
I know you asked me that and I didn't, I didn't, I do know, I didn't know. It's, it's about nine miles.
Nine miles of, really? Wow, that's a long ways.
Yeah. Yeah, with the meanders.
No kidding. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead, Grant.
Just, uh, just an observation. I, I did note that site two and site three are in relative close proximity to one another, north and south of 29th. But given the topography and, and what's going on in that area relative to the creek, I mean, it makes perfect sense to have especially that area south of 29th be converted into something useful. And, and so I think that's really site optimization in, in my view. Regarding the waterway flow, this is really a question for Ryan. Post-deracial recovery, didn't we have a lot of activity of clearing out trees and the like along all of Indian Creek?
Yeah, we removed roughly 300,000 cubic yards of debris from the waterways.
Okay. So I mean, that was the objective of that, to clear, clean it up so that we can maintain adequate flow through there. Obviously, Indian Creek floods on occasion, but that improves the overall situation.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. I, I like this project.
Well, yeah, I, I, I'll, could you have something?
No, I was just saying, we did float it last week. And so even when there's low water, it, it's, it's amazing. You can still float and have a really great time. And you may have to get out and scoot a couple of times. But so you don't need a ton of water to, to float it all south. I just wanted to chime in there too. Because I know that that's.
Just one last question, and I thought I was going to suppress my natural urge. What's the schedule for getting these all in?
Money.
Yeah, I knew that. I was being a little facetious here.
Well, I want to thank everyone who's been involved, certainly all the work your group has put in. Everyone that's been involved in it. This is a really perfect example of a kind of a grassroots. I love the grassroots nature of it, how it came to be through the Imagine Next community visioning and just the way that it's come together. It's, it's a wonderful project, you know, again, taking a natural, a natural asset or that natural feature and making it an asset. It's something that, that people in Marion have always kind of disregarded as just, it's there, a creek goes, is meandering through the city. We floated through it several times and it's really the most beautiful view of Marion, in my opinion. So it's, I, I want for one, and I know many other people have always wanted to see it become more of an amenity and an asset that we, that we get to use. We just had a meeting today for the central plaza and we were talking about water features. And you know, people love to be next to water. They don't have to be in it. But just being next to water, the site and the sound of water do something to, to you. And just creating those opportunities for people to be near the water and hopefully use, be in the water at different points. I think it's going to be a tremendous boost to the quality of life. And just one more thing that sets Marion apart and that puts us on the map is caring about quality of life and creating these opportunities for people to, to enjoy themselves. So kudos to everybody. I know Will's not here, but he's leading the committee and Todd. And certainly everyone who's, who's been involved in any way with this. Thank you for letting me jump in and out of meetings, even though I wasn't on the committee. So I can have my input. Appreciate that very much. So we'll see where it goes from here. It's, it's exciting. I.
Well, thank you. You, you really do have an incredible resource. So.
Thank you so much. Okay. Moving on with the consent agenda. There are no items marked prior to A12. Are there any items that anyone would like to discuss prior to A12? Page two. Okay, we'll move on to A12 then. Resolution approving city of Marion restroom and locker room policy. Who's discussing that one?
That's me, Your Honor.
Hello?
So this policy is really just affirming what's already the law in the state of Iowa. And also in the city of Marion, the state of Iowa and the city of Marion both recognize gender identity as a protected class. And so we are not allowed to discriminate based on any of the protected classes when we offer our public accommodations, which includes the most basic of accommodations, restrooms, locker room facilities. And so this is really putting that law into a written policy so that the people who need that policy know that it's there and that their rights are protected. We have just for additional information, we've had this as the policy for the, the pool locker rooms for years, and there has not been one incident of problems. Oh, also, this was run by our, our contracted DEI specialist, Tom Newkirk.
Okay, that's good to know. Any questions, comments? Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, thanks, Kara. The, then the next item that's marked for discussion is F4 on page three. Are there any items for, that anyone would like to discuss prior to F3? F4, I'm sorry. Okay, F4. Is that Tom? Okay. Tom, is your mic on? Is the mic?
Not.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes, though the, the service contract and the scope of work is for the real estate analysis for the property north of the 27th Street. Roundabout. So we're going to take a look at that property, understand its highest best uses, move forward and evaluate projects for that property.
Any discussion or question? Any questions on that, I guess? Yeah, go ahead.
Tom, I, I see the schedule in the cover letter to the, all of this from Leland Consulting Group says, approximately two weeks after receiving signed contract and client authorization to proceed. So I would imagine that could happen this week, authorization to proceed. Then I guess, would we be able to see the results of this in our next cycle of meetings?
That, that would be my hope.
Okay.
It may be a similar situation. Obviously, we've been fast tracking this and that's why it was passed out tonight. But it might be something that we have some preliminary information at the work session and more information at the city council meeting on Thursday. But that would be the goal. The, the key to this is obviously we've got, we've got a developer. We've got development interest and it's a real estate deal, which, you know, time is money. And so we're trying to be as responsive as possible. And the conversation I have had with them is that we should be able to get this wrapped up pretty quickly. So. Thanks. I'll do what I can to get it here for the next meeting.
You want good with that one? Okay, thanks, Tom. The next item that's marked for discussion would be B1 on page four. Are there any items prior to that that anyone would like to discuss?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, this is on G1. It concerns the library. And I noticed this is the authorizing payment for furniture to Furniture International. I guess that just raised a general question in my mind. Do we have a sense of the materials that we're yet to receive in order to button up the total project? Is, is that something that has been estimated of how many materials are outstanding due to supply chain constraints? Bill, I'm maybe putting the press on you inadvertently here, but I, I think that's just a curiosity. What are you waiting on?
Sure. So thi- this resolution is for specifically for furniture and for shelving. With regard to the general question that you're asking, I don't have that specific number off the top of my head. I can certainly do some research, research on that. I do know that the big outstanding items that we are waiting on for delivery with due to supply chain issues include a redone railing for our exteriors and some technology on the inside for our room access panels, our intercom system and some, some other small technology things. So percentage wise for the overall project, I, I don't have that for you. I can, I can certainly research that and get back to you with that.
Well, I just, I guess I was just curious if there was any one individual item that was the main constraint for you being able to open as you're planning.
The, the two main constraints that will prevent us from getting full occupancy for opening are those railings on the exterior and coverings for the sinks on the inside of all the restrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other items to discuss prior to B1? Okay, B1. Is that Ryan?
Yes, Your Honor. On Thursday, while the public hearing regarding the pre-indulneered metal building package for the new public services facility on July 7th, the city council approved the project calendar. Tomorrow at 11:00 AM, we'll have bid openings. We had a very good turnout at the pre-bid meeting, meeting. So we're hoping we'll get quite a few bids and we can get that number down. Right now, the budget is just over $4.2 million with a bid alternate for a hardened structure of $440,000. Again, we'll bring back that, that to council during the public hearing with the bid tabs listed. The way the schedule is being formulated upon receipt of the metal building package on the site, and this is according to the contractors that we've gotten information from, well, we'll give them about 100 working days to get that erected. From there, we'll have $100 per day in liquidated damages. So we're hoping to trim these numbers down, both on lead time as well as the project budget for this particular item.
Okay. Questions? All right, B3.
Yes, Your Honor, and this is the resolution approving the contract with SCS engineers for the solid waste collections system study. On June 3rd, the city Marion led an RFP for qualified vendors for this project. SCS engineers responded to the RFP. Right now, their budgeted, their project budget is right at $135,500. In fiscal year '22, we budgeted $150,000 for the project. So we should be sitting good. We'll carry that over to fiscal year '23. Right now, the way the project is, is looking while the kickoff meeting, first couple of weeks in August. And, and with a community of our size, they're thinking six to eight months to finish up the project with a formal proposal to the city council. That could go quicker, it could take longer. A lot of that's going to be contingent on the public input portion of this, of this study. When they get into communities where they do have a lot of public input, they definitely want to slow down and listen to those residents. So they will be doing that both via citizen survey as well as open houses. So we'll see how it goes, but we're hoping to have formal recommendations to the council, have most of the project wrapped up by, by December this year.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead.
Ryan, okay, so it's six to eight months to complete. I, I guess, and maybe this is more a question for Mr. Waller. How does, how does the output of this study serve as an input to our, our go-forward strap planning, budget activity and the like?
It's certainly helpful. Once we get that schedule more locked in, we'll be able to figure out how best to fit it in with the budget calendar and whatnot. But, and we're, we're still, we just got our comments back from our strategic plan consultant. So we're going to be updating some of that anyway. So some of it is going to have to be, take some time to sync up, but I think we're, we're in good shape.
Well, let me ask one more, more specific question. Are we going to wait until this study is complete before we finalize the, the equipment that we want to order for solid waste?
So this, that's a great question. This will help answer Grant's question. So part of this study will be.
So part of this study will be fragmented in different phases. Okay, and so part of this process is formulating various different scenarios for the council to look at. And so you'll have a couple avenues to look at solid waste collections, and you'll have some really good data by December. And so what that'll include, some different scenarios for collections with a budgetary number attached to that. And so you'll see not only what direction we're going to go, or what, where can we go, but you'll see that number formulated next to that, and we'll definitely pull in Michael Maloney with the Davidson. He'll be a part of that discussion. So our goal is to get you that, those, that information to you by the budget cycle. That way, we have a good picture going into it, and then the final decisions can be made by the city council as we proceed through those budget hearings.
So the information for the equipment side of it?
Yeah.
And how to do it will come first, looking at different methods will come second.
Absolutely. That information on the equipment is fairly easy to get. That's going to be one of the first things we're going to be doing.
I would hope so too. All right, thanks.
Yeah, so that, you did answer my question. There's going to be some intermediate deliverables, informational deliverables that then can plug and play in our considerations for strap planning and budget and everything else. My, my concern is, I just think that understanding this and making decisions about what we do long-term, I'm beginning at least to feel some urgency that this is a, this is a big deal to us, so.
I agree. Probably in the way they propose this to us, a lot of that data is going to be done within the first three months of the study. So we're going to have that data relatively soon.
City manager.
And I would just add that as we go through, once, once we get underway with different studies like this, and as Ryan just mentioned, if we have a lot of data upfront, we can also schedule checkpoints with the council and bring you along. This is where we're at. This is what we know to this point. This is where we're going next. So it's not, this will not be the first and only time you'll see it. Well, we can strategize and make sure that we're doing those checkpoints.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? Clear? Okay. Thanks, Ryan. The next item is C one, is that correct? Chief?
UTVs?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry, I was out the last council meeting. I was out of town. I missed the fireworks, pun intended. And wasn't here to answer your question, so I apologize for that. From what I was told, there were some questions or concerns about the fine levels, that you guys wanted to see those adjusted. So I worked with Kara a little bit on this, and, and what I thought I would do is, so we have a city code and city ordinances because the state code says, the state code says that we have to have those. Within our city ordinances, unless there's a specific penalty written into our city ordinance, it's treated as a simple misdemeanor under state law. The state law misdemeanors, the fines range from $105 to $850, $55 for a simple misdemeanor, plus jail time if it gets to that. So when we first set up the initial fines, what I was trying to do was to keep that under the level of what the state misdemeanors would be. So I think up here, what I think we could do is if, if council wants these set higher to be more of a deterrent, I think the way to go about that would be is we pick out the elements which, within our ordinance that aren't included under any state codes. So under the state ordinance is 321I, there's things like having to be 18 to drive the UTVs. That's in the state code, so we don't really need to address that. We can treat all those as a state misdemeanor. But if you want to make a deterrent, we'll take the, the individual pieces that are unique to our ordinance, and we can start those, if you want to start them at $250 for the first one, go 500. Kara and I talked about it. I don't think it's smart to go above 855 because that's kind of what the state has capped theirs at. And I don't know that we want to go over what they've already done.
We can't.
There you go. And I also think that it's, if, if you run into it, we run the risk is if, if we, if we have our ordinance, if there's an applicable state violation in there and we make our ordinance more severe than that, it can be challenged. And it could look like it's sort of a money grab if, if we say, hey, if you're not 18, we want $250, but the state, you know, normal fine is 105. So I think that's the way to do it. I'm going to change that next line. Are you on the last one already? Okay. So what I did was I took, go back one, Rachel, if you could. So these are the, the items that are unique to the proposed Marion ordinance, the hours of operation between 7:00 AM and 10:00. We're going to have to adhere to the Marion noise ordinance. That fine is going to remain at $25 per offense unless you want us to rewrite the noise ordinance. But otherwise, I think we can leave that in place. The seat belts, again, that's not required under the state code that they just released. You guys had asked for the seat belts to be put in. I think we put in the thing about the animals not being allowed in the bed of the UTV. That's also not in the state code. So if we go to the next slide, so here's what it would look like. If this is the direction council wants to go, we can certainly do that. If you look on the violation 7501, we list out the specific chapters and the specific paragraphs, 2, 6, 7, and 8. And we make that first offense $250. And this may be the original. Yep, there we go, I'm sorry. So where it says number one violations of 7504, sections 2, 6, 7, and 8 would be affected by these, these penalties here. And then under the next slide is 7505. There was three or four sections in there that aren't covered by the state code that I think we could attach those, those higher fines to. If that's what council wants, and if that's what you're asking, I can certainly go in and make that change and, and have it in there for Thursday's reading if that's what you guys would like. And if that doesn't make sense, I may have to tag team with Kara a little bit to get down in the legal weeds, but that's my kind of layman's terms.
Well, go ahead, Grant.
So this certainly meets what I was thinking in terms of my prior comments on this. And we, at one of our last meetings, maybe the last cycle, we had had some affirmation of support for making the fines stiffer than what were originally drafted. I think this is an important feature of our ordinance and for the following reason. I certainly have been sensitized to the, to the point that this is kind of a, I think the phrase was momentous undertaking by the city. And because we're entertaining a different classification of vehicle to be operating on our streets. And I think our general thought is, certainly my, my view of this is, doing it more universally across the city without having lots of limitations of where they go, that avoids what I think is an unenforceable enforcement environment. Now, Chief, you may disagree with me on that, and I would love to hear your opinion on that. But, but, so I think being more general in this, in order to have this evolve initially in a favorable manner for the, for the community, I think having a penalty structure in place for bad behavior gives us, gives us what might have been achieved by having only a few streets involved. In other words, people know you come to Marion in your UTV, you have to behave, be behaved and respectful of the community. Otherwise, there's going to be a penalty to be paid. And I think I'd prefer that mindset and give more general access to the community than being restricted and not be in a position where we can really uniformly enforce that. But I'd, I'd like your opinion on that.
Yeah, we talked about that at an earlier council meeting, and I think my concern about that is when I had those designated routes, you know, we had two running north and south and two running east and west. Is, for the officer out there on the street that he pulls somebody over up by Marion High School, you know, now he's got to get out his Google Maps and figure out where this guy started from and where he's trying to get to. And how do we say that that's the most expeditious route? It, it, it would make it difficult. I think it would be challenged. And I think, given that we were going to allow people to drive from their home to whatever that route was, you're still going to have people driving pretty much all over town anyway. So why make life harder on ourselves? It's kind of the way I looked at it. And I also think, again, I threw this out earlier on. I think if, if council chooses to take the good and the risks that go along with this, why not try to take advantage of any benefits it could bring to businesses by allowing these guys to stop at businesses here in town? And then that's just my personal take on that.
Well, I'm in, I guess I'm in favor of this enhanced penalty fee structure that you've got here for the purposes I've already stated. Thanks.
So we really think there'd be an increase in business because these things can be driven. I don't, I guess I don't see the connection there, but.
Yeah, I, if you see them out in the counties, they, they'll be six or seven of them tooling around, going to small towns. And they go out for, you know, lunch, or they stop and have a beer someplace, or they go in and watch a ballgame. I think you could see that here potentially. Now, I don't know how far away they would come, whether it would just be people here in town. But I, I, I think that potential is out there.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, again, I, I'm in favor, I think, of what you're proposing for a couple of reasons. One is, I think our city's making a lot of extra effort to give this group of UTV owners what they want. I think we've accommodated them, and they've asked us to, as a group, at least the ones who spoke two weeks ago, that we need to have stiffer fines. So that was really at their request, which I had already supported before that. And so I think we're giving them what they want on both ends. So I think the numbers are appropriate, and you write a few tickets like that. Those groups, the word's going to spread. Again, they're going to say Marion's tough on UTVs. I don't have a problem with that, toe the line. And, you know, I think it'll, I think it could have a good success for the city and the people that own UTVs. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
Anyone else? Sarah, go ahead.
So if someone under the age of 18 is driving one, caught, who, we can find them, like, but it, does it go to the parents, does it go to the owner of the ATV or the family of?
It would go to the kid operating it, just like a kid driving a car. If a kid's under 16 and they don't have any kind of license, it would just be a state charge. They would go to juvenile court through that system.
The state code specifically exempts 232, which is the provision for juvenile justice. It's specifically exempt from the provisions relating to ATVs and UTVs in Iowa code. So they would be, they would get a ticket same as an adult.
Okay, this is a, in layman's terms, that means they get ticketed like an adult, okay. And then all four, all four higher fines, I don't like that our noise, I don't like that our noise ordinance is only $25. I wish that was higher anyway. I think that's, you know, like finding people, but I also, especially after some of the other comments we've gotten on folks with that, and our willingness to work with people for waivers when they're having events and parties. I don't like that it's only $25, but it's not a deal breaker. Again, I'm tiptoeing into this. I've got to get past this vision in my head when you say six, seven, 10, like, almost like a motorcycle group roaring into town loud. Kind of the takeover, that vision that comes with that. You know, I get the recreational, I get, I get all of that. But I also have to get past this, like, loud noises piece that comes with, comes with it. So, so if they're, and then I'm thinking, so you could in a year rack up. I mean, if you had, you could have a $250 fine and someone is just really irresponsible. They get a $250 fine, then they get a 500, 750, you're, you're into the $1,500 range, right? In one year, it's not capped at anything. You can, and then beyond that, if they kept going. Is there any point in which they, is it just fine them till they stop? Or is there any point where you don't have the license for that, that vehicle loses its ability to be licensed and used?
We didn't put that in. I, I think it's just fines is, is what we're counting on being the deterrent. We don't do it for, I mean, for cars and things like that. I mean, we could, they could lose a driver's license, things like that. But I don't, since we're not requiring them to have, you know, registered here in town.
And somewhere in here, just remind me again, they have to have, you have to have a driver's license, like a car, in order to drive them. It's not like a boat where you can have a separate. And then, so they could lose their, if they, the fines go unpaid, the next step is you lose your license. If you rack up, rack up a bunch of fines, again, this is the exceptional case and my area of expertise, but just.
I think for us, if it goes through, if, if it's a moving violation, which is covered under the state code, then yes, it would be just like anything with a car. You don't pay your fines, they're going to pull your license and, and they're going to squeeze the money out of you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Grant, go ahead.
Just, so I couple, three years ago sprinkled water on my, on my Harley Davidson, and it turned into a Mustang GT. And, which is to say I quit riding motorcycles. But I had been on a few poker runs with reasonably large-sized group of motorcycle fans. And, you know, they mostly went from, you know, from here to Urbana, to Central City, to, you know, hither and yon. And the objective was, is to get as many places as you could, stop food, beverage, and then hit the road again. And what's, I would just say is, for motorcycle poker runs thus far, I don't believe Marion has been a destination. And so I wouldn't naturally make the assumption that those who have UTVs, they're really oriented to out in wide-open spaces and would go to smaller communities in perhaps smaller groups because of the nature of the writing they're doing. So I just don't have an expectation that all of a sudden we're going to have 75 to 100, to 125 UTVs descending on Marion, Iowa, because we don't see that in the motorcycle community because they want to go get miles and UTV riders want to go get trails. So I think it's a, it's a little different culture set than what might, than what we might expect. That's, I guess, my anticipation, and I may, I may be proven wrong, I may be proven right, but that's just a view I have.
I'm still a bit bewildered at how we're here, but that's just me. You know, we require 20 or 25 signatures to even look at a stop sign. And we have a handful of people who ask for this and, okay, anyone else? All right, next item. Engineering.
Yes, Your Honor, so on Thursday, we have a public hearing regarding the Lau Park sidewalk replacement project. Basically, it's replacing all the sidewalk on the south side of it and then adding additional sidewalk on the north side for additional area. We did receive two bids. The little bid came in from Midwest Concrete. There's a detailed bid tab in your council packet. Has a late start date of August 22nd, 35 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages. It did come in above the engineer's estimate, but Parks is willing to still fund the project. So we are recommending moving forward with that.
Questions? Okay, next item.
So the next item is an application for the Traffic Safety Improvement Program, or TSIP. This is the intersection of East Post and Highway 100. So this is adding dual turn lanes for eastbound and westbound traffic, and then adding a queue detection system for westbound traffic, and then improving the signals with widening the road. And then improving the signals with widening the road, adding the turn lanes. I believe now that we've replaced the signals at a. Thirty-fifth and and tenth, that this is now the oldest set of signals that we have, I believe, or close to that. So it would be good to get these replaced, it's a half million dollar request, um, we'll run the final numbers to see what the actual cost is. We have applied twice for this, and then we did do the T E P program, which is the Traffic Engineering Assistance Program. H R Green did that study for us, and this was the recommendation that they came up with using the D O T funds to do the study. So this will be the third time that we've applied to the T S I P fund for this particular project, so hopefully third times the term.
Questions, yes, go ahead, Ryan.
Sorry, Your Honor, um, we had a check in yesterday, Councilman Jensen, Atkins and Brand yesterday. Mike, can you talk about the, why it's the west?
For the queue detection systems, yes, um, so it's only on the west side because of the hill. So as you're going westbound, you can't see the intersection, you have that hill where you can't see that the cars are stacked there. And so we've had a lot of rear end collisions because of that, so basically when those lanes are full. There'll be lights that flash so that you slow down knowing that something is there over the hill. Versus if you're going eastbound, you can see that for a ways because there's not a hill impeding that view. So it's not the same as the ones that we have, say, on thirteen that tell you that the light's changing. This is to tell you that there's a car sitting there, so you don't rear on them.
You have something, Grant? Okay. Hey, anyone else? Okay, next item.
So the next one is to talk about the city of Marion, ARPA, um, so at the last city council meeting, we talked about the Lynn County, ARPA. And we applied for the Christopher Creek Sanitary Sewer System. These projects we had all applied for for the Lynn County, ARPA, the first round and did not get money for it. So the projects that we're applying for are projects four and five, and there, I know these are really small and hard to see, but they're also in your council packet, but four and five from the H G R study. And then project seven, and then the slip lining project is project nine, which is about eight and a half million dollars worth. But we're gonna spend what money we have for that, if we can go to the next slide, Terrell. So there's basically the three sanitary sewer projects, um, the totals there's are six million dollar total. And then water, uh, so those that are not aware through the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization. We have a little over three million dollars that we'll get for the section from twelfth to twenty-second. And so as part of that, that'll be Davis Bacon federal funded. And so the water department will have improvements that they have to do with the water main, and so as part of that project, because it's meeting the Davis Bacon, all the requirements that you have to meet. For ARPA, um, basically we'll use six hundred thousand dollars of that money. To go towards the water and the rest will just be cash on hand that they have for whatever that final estimate is when we bid that project. So previously on the May council meeting, we approved four hundred and fifty thousand. So there's still a little over one point four million dollars of our six million remaining in the ARPA projects to. Decide how we wanna spend that, and I think there's one more slide. So basically what we're approving today, um, is the obligated portion, so the top two orange. So we're obligating the three point five for sanitary, the six hundred thousand for water. And you can see that there's the four hundred and the the fifty thousand for the industry assistance, it's already been approved. And then the rest of it are just different plans that were proposed, but has not been officially decided. By moving forward with the infrastructure projects, we can either get those, start to design those, it's gonna take time. To go through that process so that we can get moving on that, and then at a later council meeting can decide where that remaining dollar amount goes for those ARPA funds.
Okay. So.
So the action that will be on Thursday is to approve the three point five million dollars towards sanitary and six hundred thousand towards water. So we're only approving the infrastructure program and leaving that remaining a portion to be determined at a later date. So that we can move forward with those infrastructure projects.
Okay. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, so what's our timeline to determine the allocation on the remaining items?
I'm gonna punt to Mr. Waller.
Believe it's obligated by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So I'll have to, I'll have to confirm that, that's my belief, I will.
But it's not imminent.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Comments?
Mayor, sorry, just, um, for tracking purposes, once. Assuming council approves the allocation on Thursday, we're gonna turn that yellow to green and then we'll just continue to update this as we. Go along and bring projects forward, so that at least that way we can, we can all be on the same page with what's being spent and how it's being allocated.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it for you, Mike?
That is it.
Okay, community development.
On Thursday, the city council will be reviewing a preliminary plat for Silver Ridge Estates located off of Albernet Road, just west of. Uh, Oak Ridge Middle School, um, the preliminary plat is, um, on the screen overhead and then also. Uh, in the packet, there was a pretty lengthy review of that project by the, by staff. The planning commission has reviewed the preliminary plat, they reviewed it at their last meeting. And they did recommend approval of it, that's why we're here this evening, um, just to walk through a couple of the key features of the, of the plat. This is a fourteen acre plat, it's got twenty-four lots ranging from a third of an acre up into. Just over three quarters of an acre, so there's some of the larger lots that we're seeing built in the, or are developed in the community currently. As the council, um, is aware, the northwest quadrant of the community is seeing a lot of growth. This is an extension of the work that Integrity Custom Homes has been doing on the northwest side. This piece of property will extend west and connect into the larger preliminary plat. And I I don't have an overhead slide to show it all, but it is all well connected and coordinated, uh, the preliminary plat for the property west. Is, it provides an extension through this property to Albernet Road, so the neighborhoods would be connected. Sewer serviceability will extend from the eastern side of Albernet Road through this property to allow service to be. Yet to be final platted area to the west, um, just for a point of reference, this is also. The first kind of phase to that, to the area north of Don Drive, I think. In the past, we've referenced the neighborhood as the Don Drive neighborhood, uh, they experienced quite a bit of stormwater. That runs through their neighborhood, they were developed in the county. Within that subdivision, the water runs pretty much diagonally from west to east and it just. Goes through the neighborhoods quite quickly, especially in severe rain events or or high volume rain events. We're hoping and we've worked with the developer, um, of this area, but primarily west of here. To ensure that there's adequate water retention that will slow down that water, it will not eliminate the water going through the neighborhood. But it will certainly slow it down, capture it for a period of time, especially in some of our lighter rain events, so a portion of this plat on the northwest side. Is is just the, the end of the larger detention basin that will be developed with the further west expansion. Some of the other key features of this is that, um, that it's got plenty of water service, um, so the water isn't a problem here. Stormwater management, there's a detention basin on the north or in the southeast side, just directly. Uh, across from the school and and north of the county. Farmstead that's on the south side, uh, it's, it's been developed to adequately serve the neighborhood as being proposed. Streets will be constructed to city standard, I think it'd be, it's, uh, should be pointed out that the eight foot. Trail along the west side of Albernet Road will be extended, uh, through the development along Albernet Road, so along. The lots there that front Albernet, cross the street and continue south along the, uh, outlot. This does not make a connection between all of the neighborhoods down to Oak Ridge School at this point. So there's, there's not a connection there, um, and so crossing Albernet. Into these neighborhoods is, is going to continue to be somewhat of a problem. I don't think that this is something that the developer should have to solve with his project. There's also no sidewalk from Albernet Road into Echo or into, uh, Oak Ridge School, so even if they were able to cross. They still have to get to the school grounds and there's, uh, that intersection gets pretty, uh, dicey in the morning, so. I think at this point, um, that might be something we have to look at internally or work with Linmar on and how that, that crossing occurs. But but certainly with the development, we're gonna continue to build out that, uh, access pedestrian accessway along the west side of of Albernet Road. Within the development, as the council's aware, there's sidewalks required on both sides of the street. As you continue from Albernet West, there's the outlot where the detention basin will be. And then there's a portion of the property that's fronting, um, or a portion of the roadway that'll front the farmstead. And so, um, in the way our codes would work is there would be a requirement for the sidewalk to be put in by the owner. This is a previously platted piece of property that we brought, that that is actually in the county. So they're not, it'd be difficult to require them to immediately put that sidewalk in to accommodate that and to. Ensure that the developer is providing access just east of the cul-de-sac. There's gonna be a crosswalk that goes into the north part of the street, and then as those properties develop, sidewalk will extend. Along the north side of the street to Albernet Road, so there will not be a sidewalk for the, on the south side adjacent to the outlot or to the farmstead. Uh, over to the bulb, if that makes sense. As I indicated, the, uh, planning commission, um, took a peek at this at the last meeting and did recommend approval. There were, the, the only thing I would say is there's, there's a lot of conversation about. Access, pedestrian access and Albernet Road signalization and how in the future. We're gonna be able to get the kids that are potentially walking to the, to middle school across Albernet Road, and I think that's something. We, we need to probably work with, uh, Linmar on internally, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Not a question, but as Mike knows, we're in the middle of this exact campus with Linmar discussing safe routes to school. Between Oak Ridge, Hazel Point and and Echo Hill, because it is kind of a developing area and we all know Albernet Road is nothing to tangle with, but. There's big road between that campus and what have you, so it's a great opportunity to continue that conversation, because they're. At the table as well, looking at what they're gonna do, so let us know what we can do to help.
Anyone else? You have one more, Tom?
Final item under community development is the resolution for a revised. The revised Broad and Main Monumental Staircase portion of the Broad and Main Project, as indicated on the slide above. There's been a request to move, um, from, uh, the staircase that was originally approved in the applicant, in the packet, there is a detail. Of the previous, and then I don't know that we got a cut, I don't, there's not an image of that, but the, I can add it for Thursday when we're talking about it to this PowerPoint. But, um, there was a staircase on either side of the area that's highlighted in red and then. Multiple steps that moved up towards, uh, the, the plaza area or the elevated area of B M seven. It's really between B M seven and B M six of that site development plan, um, the developers have requested to move. More of the outdoor seating on the upper terrace, uh, uh, west into the plaza and then add some landscaping and then. Have seating below that area and remove one staircase, um, so their, their request was included in the packet. We didn't, did do an internal review, as the, the council's aware. From the building face of B M seven, uh, west, that's, that's actually city right of way. So they're building a portion of that, that upper area on city right of way, um, or on city property. And then we entered into a, a permanent access easement to provide them the ability to, to use portions of that property. As well, um, there's also a provision that there's public access provided through that area, uh, as a part of that public access easement agreement. So we did a, a review of this, um, it's been looked at at the, uh. The Uptown Design Review Committee looked at it, they just wanna make sure that there's public access is maintained through the area. The Historic Preservation Commission also took a look at it, um, and then, uh, planning commission. Reviewed it at their last meeting and recommended approval. Understand that for the public, this probably doesn't show what was before, but the council has the packet with a detail of that. If there's any questions on that, I can answer them.
Questions? Go ahead, Grant.
So i- if I describe the change that's being requested here, it is a reduction in the. How wide the stairway would be and that there's not. Stadium style seating. Yeah. Essentially five levels. Yeah. So you walk up there, there are larger seating, if you've been to the Y, that's stadium seating, what we kind of consider stadium seating where you can. Kind of hang out on it and spread out. This, uh, so they've taken the top two tiers of that and extended and made it level with the terrace. So ultimately, they could have tables and chairs. And then they've landscaped in between that upper terrace and a lower seating. Larger stadium seating for found on either side. Well, looking at it just, again, from my standpoint, I think it's taking stadium seating, which may or may not be conducive. For sitting, eating, dining, whatever you're doing, converting it into space that allows. More easily for those activities. So. I do see that the revised does retain still some seating at ground level below the terrace, so. Okay.
Other questions? Okay, I'm gonna turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Very good, thank you, Your Honor. Okay, anything else on, on F three? For Tom. Okay, so other department discussion, uh, we have a financial policy review. And, uh, so I guess that's Leanne.
Thank you, um, as you are aware, we are, um, changing the way we're doing budgets, so this is the next discussion in a series of budget discussions. You will note, looking at the screen and also in your packet, that the bulk of these policies have not been updated since nineteen ninety-five. So we do expect this year will be a little bit of a heavier lift as we look to update. Part of this, uh, as part of this review, the work we've been doing would include, um, reviewing our comparable cities. With focus primarily on those cities that have a Moody's rating, bond rating of a double A one or higher. And also those that have a Government Finance Officers Association Budget Presentation Award. As you can imagine, these documents can be extremely lengthy, so we needed to kind of focus in. And also as part of this, I've been having conversations with Michael Maloney, with D A Davidson, and he also did provide me with an example. In today's language, what a set of financial policies might look like. In looking at the nineteen ninety-five policies that are currently our adopted policies. I would say that the majority of them are minor administrative changes, um, with the exception of the two I've highlighted. And when I say minor administrative changes, for instance, if you look at the revenue policy from nineteen ninety-five. You'll note that there's a section on economic development, well, we've since then passed an economic development policy, so cleaning that up. And then adding some. and then adding some subsections and some language surrounding property taxes. Those types of things don't change administratively necessarily what we're doing, but actually kind of put that black and white on paper with the guidance. Another example, for instance, operating expenditures, adding language that explicitly states current expenses will be paid with current revenues. That type of language is not in our existing policy. And then just specifically honing in on the reserve policy and the debt management policy, because these are the areas that I see we need the most update and the most focus. So moving on, for instance, our reserve policy, right now, our policy for general fund is twenty-five percent of general fund expenditures. In practice, we typically use thirty-five percent when we are budgeting. Looking at all of the comparable cities, that number seems to be pretty consistent at the twenty-five percent. So I'm not suggesting changing that. However, in our other operating funds, road use, sanitary sewer, solid waste, stormwater, urban forest, our current policy is silent. You heard Mike Maloney say it earlier. The recommended absolute minimum is twenty-five percent of expenses similar to general fund. In the comparable cities that I've seen, that number seems to be consistent as well. That seems to be the most common. Michael Maloney did also recommend we might consider looking at a dollar value, say, a minimum of a million, a million, a minimum of one point five million. I'm not presenting today like this is what we're going to do. I'm just trying to update you on kind of where we're at, what we're looking at. The expectation would be that we will eventually put on council agenda what that updated financial policies might look like with the red line, so you can see what's changed and weigh in. But this conversation is an attempt to bring you along in some of these future decisions that you will need to consider. We also need to add a reserve for health insurance. It's not in our policy. We don't have that number today. However, we will be formulating that through this budget process as we get a number from our actuary and as we do the analysis on the health insurance fund. And then on the equipment reserve fund, right now, we are to schedule and replace anything over five hundred dollars according to our policy, which is a really low dollar amount. So of course, I would suggest that we increase that dollar amount with the final amount to be determined. Any questions so far on what I've talked about?
Leanne, just a general question. If you look at the old policy, first of all, there's no date even in the old policy to have any idea when they were written, when they were revised, and I suggest we do have that in the future. But there's also no statement at the beginning of that to say, are these guidelines? Or are these firm policies that we must adhere to? So I'd suggest we put some verbiage to provide the reader what these really are. So if we if we're gonna put a threshold in there, we're gonna put a percentage. Is that a guideline, or is that something that the city council must adhere to? So I think make sure it's very clear what these are or what they aren't.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just, I would just say, Leanne, thinking back to the effort that you took on our investment policy, along with our Investment Review Board, I think that was principally work that was done last year to bring that policy up to up to snuff. That was great work, and I just really think you're gonna have the same similar kind of treatment to these as you target them and get them improved.
So the other big area, if I may, is the debt management policy. Right now, the debt limit is set at fifty percent of our statutory limit. This one, I question whether we should either increase it or change our debt philosophy. If you would recall, in history, we have tended to use general obligation debt for the bulk of our debt. When I say the bulk of our debt, I mean our enterprise funds. We would typically use general obligation debt and then abate it, which is a lower cost of borrowing. However, it then inevitably ends us ends up with us starting to hit that fifty percent limit and then starting to do things such as annual appropriation debt and looking at some of those other options. So I'm not necessarily suggesting that we increase it, but maybe we change our philosophy and look at revenue debt. Do more revenue bonds on enterprise funds. The other, just a few other items from the actual policy that I have on the screen here. Average maturity of total general obligation debt should not exceed, and it said ten years, which we have not been following that ten-year guideline. The guideline coming from D A Davidson is that we use the useful life of the asset being financed, which makes sense. A couple that I would recommend that we just remove. One was keep direct general obligation debt per capita at less than four hundred and fifty dollars and total geo debt per capita at less than seven hundred and fifty dollars. I think I've found maybe two cities that do have a dollar amount in there, but obviously, if we were to have that type of a language in there, it needs to be updated annually as inflation occurs. I would suggest not having it in there because it provides more flexibility. Total geo debt service in any year should not exceed thirty-three percent of general fund revenues. I'm not really sure why that was a benchmark. I don't see that in any other comparable city policy either. And then on the next slide, also on the debt management front, adding a policy on borrowing for C I P, for capital improvement program or capital movement projects. Right now, we actually don't have, our our policy is essentially silent on if there is a minimum project cost. And I'm seeing a lot of the more developed policies for other cities do have a minimum project cost, meaning they don't borrow for projects that are under a set threshold. So that's something I think we should consider. Adding a policy on refunding, meaning we, this is when we look at actually refunding is when the savings benefit is a minimum of three percent. So if there's anything less than three percent, we don't, we don't look at that. And then also adding potentially, if we're gonna keep with the fifty percent, self-imposed debt limitations may not take into account debt issued as a consequence of voter-approved bond referendums. And that's more for the purpose of, you know, if we're at forty-five percent debt today and the and the public wanted to vote on something that would take us over that limit, that's something for city council to consider. Again, these aren't necessarily my suggested changes today, like this is what's going to make it into the policy. But these are points I think city council needs to needs to start putting some thought into. As in future dates, you will see a new written-up policy that shows the changes and some marked up areas for your opinion. Any questions, comments? And it looks like Ryan has something to add.
Just as we begin our new budget cycle, our budget process, the council and once finance is able to bring forward a draft with the markups and we get the blessing of the council every year as part of the budget process, any sort, we'll do a review of the financial policies with the city council. So we'll be able to keep it fresh, keep it, you know, look at it annually and make sure that we're it's a living, breathing document that we are we are following and 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 just keeping it up to date, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the end of our discussion agenda here, so next action item for us is to adjourn to closed session.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one dot five, one C of the Code of Iowa. Two separate measures.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five, one C of the Code of Iowa, and there are two separate measures. May please have the legal statement.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five, one C.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Ms. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes. Okay, with that, we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening.